Just want to start off by saying that I'm very appreciative to have what I consider the best police department in the United States. And they are very proactive. They're always looking for new ways to protect our citizens. And tonight, we're going to talk about a way to protect our citizens that sometimes they get in a position where they just can't take care of themselves. We have an epidemic in this country. We have an epidemic of addiction to all different kinds of substances. We know that there's a lot of programs that work for a lot of substances. Some substances lend itself better than others. But public awareness is needed at a high level to attack the addiction of heroin. We have lost children. We have lost adults. We have lost church members. We have lost our neighbors. We have lost businessmen. And it's got to stop. And I applaud my police department for wanting to get this program going. I wish we had a better attendance, but I know some people are interested in an ice hockey game tonight. But I'd like to, at this time, introduce Chief Lowry and thank him for putting this program on for us for heroin addiction.
Thank you, Mayor, for your very kind words. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. I just want to first thank the mayor and the entire city council, who most of them are with us this evening, for being here tonight and also for their continued support of the Florissant Police Department. And I say this a lot, and it's very true, is without their support, the success of the Florissant Police Department would be almost impossible. So I really do appreciate what the mayor and the city council do. I want to welcome everyone here tonight. I promised to be brief. I got some wonderful speakers this evening. And I, quite honestly, I'm kind of interested to hear what they have to say. So I don't, I want to be very brief, but I do want to welcome everybody here tonight. Obviously, this is a serious problem. This heroin and painkiller addiction is a serious problem, not only in the city of Florissant, but the entire country, as the mayor mentioned. I attend a lot of meetings throughout the country with the IACP, City Police Chiefs Association, and the Area Police Chiefs Association. And I promise you that this is always a topic of conversation. This is a problem that is affecting everyone in our country, and unfortunately, it's affecting our city also. We have recently, we, in our Florissant Police family, we've lost three members. We have someone on my command staff that he lost, his nephew. I've got a lady that you're going to hear speak here in a minute. I'll introduce her in just a second. She lost her son. And I had a young police officer that lost his sister to heroin. So we believe that this is a serious problem. Our whole purpose of here tonight is to have a discussion about this. And like I said, I think we brought some wonderful people together to have that discussion. And so that, I'll get to that in a minute. I do want to introduce my command staff that's also with me tonight. I got Major Tim Fagan. He's with us this evening. Captain Randy Bowden. And Captain Vince Godfrey. Thank you. So we're going to get on with the program. And I want to explain how this kind of came about. Is Marilyn Smashy, she's one of my, now she's one of my dispatchers, but a couple months ago, she was one of my corrections officers. And we were standing in the break room, and we were discussing that she lost her son and all the wonderful things and the great accomplishments that he had in his life. And unfortunately, he succumbed to the heroin addiction. Unfortunately, he passed away. And she's going to tell her story. But as we got talking about that, and she told me that she speaks in a lot of public forums with a wonderful group of people that we're going to meet here this evening, and that they have a great program, they've got a great message, and they've got a lot of great information that they always put out to other communities. And I asked her if it was possible that we could bring that group here to the city of Florissant, the Florissant Police Department. And she, obviously, she accepted. And she was very excited about this program this evening, as we are, to get this information out there. And so I won't go any further. I would like to introduce Marilyn Smashy, one of my dispatchers.
On December 5th of 2009, I found my only son, Taylor, dead from a heroin overdose. You know, I look back, and I think, you know, Taylor was no different than any of our other children. Our families were no different. I never thought that we would be faced with this kind of a problem. When Taylor was little, you know, he was that bubbly little two-year-old running around with a smile on his face. He always had some kind of funny thing to say and do. He was one of those kids, of course, we all think our children are smarter than everybody else's, but at two years old, Taylor named all the states and capitals. By the time he was in fifth grade, he could read on a 12th grade level. When Taylor started going into middle school is when he started struggling with fitting in and peer pressure. And he got bullied a lot because Taylor was a big kid. He was overweight. He had a lot of, you know, problems, and kids picked on him. But, you know, he wanted to fit in. So he started hanging out with other kids, and they started smoking marijuana. And that's how it all got started. When Taylor was 12 years old, he was diagnosed with ADHD. And I soon found that Taylor was trading his ADHD medicine for weed. So, of course, that was another situation where, you know, we had to, you know, call him out and just, you know, you can't do that. You can't share your prescriptions with other people. And weed will get you in trouble. So by the time Taylor, I guess he was about 14 years old, you know, he started having a lot of problems with school and not going to school. And being a single mom, it was hard for me to keep him in line and go to work. I worked three different jobs to try to take care of him and his sisters. So I sent him to go live with his dad. In the process of Taylor living with his dad, he was struggling in high school, trying to fit in as well. So he started hanging out with a crowd of kids that wanted to smoke pot and kind of hang out. They skipped school a lot. And one day, his dad called me, and he said, "You know, Marilyn, I think Taylor's using heroin." And I'm like, "No, he's not. Taylor, you know, Taylor wouldn't ever do that. There's no way." He said, "You need to come here and talk to this boy." So, of course, I drive all the way out there, and he's locked in the bathroom, and he's violently ill. He's throwing up and everything. So I'm thinking, "Oh, no, you know, he's just, he's got the stomach flu." I'm like, "Tim, you're crazy. That child is not going to use heroin." So I'm like, "Get in the car. I'm taking you to the hospital." I'm thinking, you know, "He's so sick, you know, he's got to get treatment." And I'm thinking, "Stomach flu, something like that." I get him in the car, and he's begging me, "Mom, don't take me to the hospital." I'm like, "Taylor, I mean, well, what's going on? You have to tell me what you did." And that's when he admitted to me that he had started using heroin, and he got turned on to heroin by a former classmate. With as ill as he was, I really wanted to believe that Taylor, you know, he learned his lesson. He was very sick, you know, he would never do it again. He's like, "I promise, Mom, I promise, I will never do this again." So being mom, I believed everything that he told me. And a couple weeks later, his dad calls me and says, "You have to come get this boy." They had gotten into a fight and called the police, and Taylor was getting charged with assault on his dad. So, of course, Taylor ran away. And I got a hold of him and told him, you know, "You need to come, stay with me." In the process of him running away, he decided to go back to the original group of friends that he had been hanging out with. And they decided to go to the store and steal a bottle of vodka. Of course, there was confrontation with the store manager, and Taylor got arrested. When he got arrested, the judge held him for 30 days in the county jail. And then he sentenced him to 30 days in a rehab for alcohol abuse because he stole a bottle of vodka. When Taylor was in rehab, he met a guy there that had been a heroin user, and he had been sentenced to a drug court, and the same thing as Taylor. When they got released, the judge had stated, basically, "Taylor was to come and stay with me." He had to get a job. He had to go back to school. And he had to attend the NA and HA meetings. So this whole entire time, I'm thinking, "Him and this other guy, they're going to these meetings, and I'm, you know, all excited. Taylor's, you know, getting on the right track." And he started missing curfew. So I called him out on it, you know, "We're not doing this. Judge said this, this is what you're going to do. If you can't follow the rules, you'll be out of my house." So I found out that that's when Taylor admitted to me that they had been going down to St. Louis and getting heroin. And I'm like, "Well, how are you doing that? You have no money." Well, the guy that he was with was giving him gas money and heroin for free to take him down to the city to buy more heroin. So that put an end to everything. I basically told him, "You're done. You know, one more time you screw up, this guy is no longer allowed here. You're out of my house, and you can tell the judge yourself why you have nowhere to live, because you will not be under my roof." So a couple of weeks are going by. Taylor's doing good. He got a job interview. He got his school started. He, you know, was doing everything that we had asked him to do in order to stay living at my house. So I woke up one morning, and, of course, I get up at 4:30 and go to work. So I go in and flip on the light just to let him know, "Hey, you know, I'm here. And you have your interview today. You need to go, you know, go talk to your dad. He's going to get your phone turned on for you. Get your school stuff squared away, and call me when you wake up. If you don't call me, I'm going to be blowing up this house phone," because I kept tabs on him every day. So he never called. He never called. Finally, I started blowing up the house phone. And he answers, and he's kind of mad, you know, "What? What?" And I said, "You know, Taylor, you have to do this, and this, and this." And I did my normal mom nag and stuff that I felt I was entitled to do. And he got real quiet. He was getting mad. And all of a sudden, he said, "I love you, Mama." And I go, "I love you too, T." I didn't know then, but that was the last time I was ever going to talk to my son. And all day that day, I had a really bad feeling all day. Something just wasn't right. So when I came home from work, he wasn't there. You know, I called his girlfriend. I called his friends. Nobody saw him. And I knew in my gut where he was, but I didn't want to believe that he was doing that. Because, you know, as a parent, you want to believe everything, that your child's doing good, and he's on the right track. But he never came home from curfew. And I was mad because I was kicking him out. Bottom line is, I told him, and he had to go, you know. So I went on to bed. And the next morning, I woke up, and, of course, you know, immediately, I run out to the front of the house, and his car's in the driveway. So I'm thinking, "Okay, you know, you've got to stick to your guns. You've got to stay strong." And for whatever reason, I don't even know what it was, but I felt drawn to go to his room. I needed to go there. And I remember opening the door, and I'm looking across the room, and I could see the light was coming across the room and shining over his bed, and I could see him laying there, and he's looking up at the ceiling. And I'm like, "Taylor, what are you doing?" And I kept calling out to him, but he wouldn't answer me. And I walk over to him, and I look at him, and I even touched him, and he was really cold. And I'm thinking, "What's going on?" You know, and I'm, "Taylor, Taylor," and I shook him, and he didn't move. And I looked down, and I realized, you know, "I'm looking into the face of death, and it's my child." And immediately, I think everything that I felt, I went numb. I was in total shock because what I was seeing, it just wasn't registering with me. And I remember, like, just screaming, "No, you know, this isn't, this isn't happening in 911, and there's all these emergency vehicles and people." My house was covered with detectives and police officers, and you name it, they were there. And I remember watching this man come into my house, and I thought, "There's my ray of hope, because he's going to go back there, and he's going to tell me that I'm wrong. And he's going to tell me that Taylor's okay." And I hung on to that little bit of hope for that moment, thinking, "We're going to be fine. Everything's going to be fine." And I remember him coming back, and he's looking at me, and I kept thinking, "Okay," you know. And he says, "I'm sorry." I'm like, "Sorry? What are you sorry for?" And he goes, "But Taylor didn't make it." And I remember just being like, "No, you know, you, you go back in there, and you, you come back, you have to tell me something different. There's, this isn't happening. No way. Taylor, not my Taylor." But he couldn't tell me that. He couldn't come back and tell me that Taylor was okay, you know. And I didn't, you know, everything about Taylor's life flashed before my eyes at that very moment. I mean, I can remember, like, preparing a little outfit to bring him home from the hospital because I was so excited, you know. But now, I have to prepare a suit for his funeral. And this isn't how it's supposed to be. You know, and I remember thinking, "All the coulda, shoulda, wouldas, you know, maybe if I would've done this, or I would've done that." I beat myself up for a long time because I thought it was my fault that Taylor died, that I didn't do something right as a parent. And it took me a long time to get through that. You know, and the funny, I mean, it's not really funny, but like, I look at it, and I think, you know, "How lucky am I?" Because I'm somebody that got to hear my son tell me, "I love you," one last time. And I could tell him that back. And there's so many parents that don't get that opportunity. You know, I didn't want Taylor's life to have just been that kid that died from heroin. I wanted people to know that his life and his death had purpose and meaning. So that's why I started getting out and talking to people, because I wanted everyone to know there was so much more to him. It's different than anybody else that's lost somebody. You know, you feel empty, and you never recover from that. You just got to figure out a way to move on, you know. And heroin has forever affected my life, my daughters, everybody that knew Taylor. And I think my biggest thing that I want to ask people to do, you know, when you go home, sit down and talk to your kids. Find that time where you put everything away. You know, ask them questions about heroin. Ask them what do they know. You'd be surprised. But not only ask, but listen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marilyn. My name is Brandon Cost Harrison, and I'm with NCADA, with National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, and we're a St. Louis-based community health agency. And we're really working to raise awareness about the heroin and prescription opiate epidemic that we're facing as a region, you know. Marilyn's story, you know, every time I hear your story or another story like it, we get misty-eyed because these impact us at a visceral, guttural level. And that's one story. But we have to recognize that as a region, last year, that story happened 462 times. The year before that, that story happened 458 times. These stories are repeating themselves more than once a day in this region. That's more people than are dying from violent crime. That's more fatalities than we're seeing in motor vehicle accidents. This is truly hitting an epidemic proportion. And if you look at the way the numbers have gone since 2007, we've more than tripled the number of people that are dying from this disease. This is a disease of a substance use disorder. So what, why is this happening in our community? And frankly, why is it happening across the nation? There's a couple of different things that we need to recognize. First off, that this is a mental health disorder. And as our next speaker will talk about, it has to be treated as such. It's a public health emergency that we're facing. But I want to back up from the heroin. We've all heard about how dangerous heroin is, how scary heroin is. But nobody wakes up one morning and says, "You know what? Today, I'm going to try heroin." The vast majority of people that start heroin actually got their start a long time ago with prescription opioids. These are things like Vicodin, Hydrocodone, Percocet, Oxycontin. Those drugs that most of us get after a surgery or an injury or something like that, these are, come from the exact same part of the exact same plant that heroin comes from. In the brain, it works functionally the same way. So the vast majority of people start off with these pills, especially teenagers. Teenagers have no fear of a pill. I'm terrified of needles. For the longest time, I didn't get flu shots because I hate needles. The needle was a barrier to entry for people to use heroin. We're not seeing that anymore. We're seeing heroin that's so pure, kids can take a pill, open it up, and they can snort it. There's nothing scary about, you know, that. It's gross, but there's nothing scary about it. So kids don't have that same fear that they used to. So we have very readily available prescription drugs. There was a study done in St. Louis County. About one-third of high school kids said they can either ease, very easily or sort of easily, get access to prescription medications. That's way too much. And there's actually something that you can do tonight to make your home and community a safer place. We have these for free out in the lobby. These are drug disposal bags. If you have medication in your medicine cabinet at home right now, you can take one of these bags, put the excess pills in there, add some water, shake it up, and throw it away. It's an environmentally friendly way to dispose of medication. As Juan will talk about here in a little bit, the DEA is doing a drug takeback on the 30th of this month, on a Saturday. You can take all of your old prescriptions and drop them off, no questions asked. Cleaning out these medicine cabinets makes our communities a safer places. Because, let's face it, teenagers try things. That's the nature of being a teenager. They're risk takers. If those medicines are in the medicine cabinet, there is a chance that a teenager might experiment with them. Getting them out makes your home a safer place. One of the other things that we're seeing with this increased purity of heroin is other additives that make it stronger, the main one being fentanyl. Fentanyl's about 100 times stronger than morphine, and we're seeing this mixed in at higher and higher rates, and it's causing a lot more fatalities in our region. So one thing that we, one thing that we really have to do is start the conversation. And that's what this is here tonight. I appreciate this Florissant Police Department, the mayor, all of the folks that are taking a leadership role and skipping a hockey game to come out and have this discussion. Because now, you can take the information that you get tonight, and you can take it back to your families, take it back to your friends, your workplaces, and have these discussions so that those individuals are able to go home and make their community a safer place. So three things that want to talk, that I want you to do and take away as action items. First, clean out your medicine cabinet. Has to be done. The second is talking to your kids. As Marilyn mentioned, you know, teenagers don't necessarily, you don't necessarily think that they're listening, but they are. They hear you. 90% of parents say that they talk to their kids about drugs, talk about alcohol, marijuana, tobacco. Less than 15% include prescription drugs in those talks. They are just as if not more deadly. And the last thing that you can do is you can advocate for policies in the legislature and here at the city level that make our communities a safer place. This county just implemented what's called a prescription drug monitoring program, but we need one statewide that keeps people from doctor shopping and getting a lot of these medications that they can then sell on the streets. We need access to what's called naloxone. It can be thought of as a heroin antidote or a reversal for an overdose. And we need a Good Samaritan law, which reduces what's called body dumping, where people that are experiencing an overdose get abandoned because their friends that are there with them are afraid of prosecution. I never want someone to have to choose between incarceration and saving their friend's life, because especially if there are prior convictions, I'm not sure which way that person's going to choose. But these are things that we can do at a state and community level in order to make our communities a safer place and to help make some progress and bend the arc of this epidemic. But one of the other big takeaways is that there is hope, particularly teenagers, but young folks. The first time they use heroin, they don't feel good about themselves. They feel dirty. They feel, you know, heroin has such a prejudice against it. It's a drug. People are afraid of it, and they think, "You know what? There's no coming back. I've already made it this far." But what they have to recognize is no point is too far. Recovery is possible, and that treatment works. So the next person I want to introduce is Dana Sebastian Duncan to speak about what treatment options there are in St. Louis and talk a little bit about the science side.
Okay. Thank you, Brandon. Can you hear me? Is it good? Yes? All right. So my name is Dana, and I've, I'm coming to you tonight as a representative of the treatment world. I've been in the field of addiction, substance use treatment for 28 years, and I'm also a person in long-term recovery myself. So, and I'm a parent, so I come to you, you know, from different angles. But I'm here to say that treatment does work. I meet with a lot of people. I've talked with a lot of people, young, old, all ages. Many years ago, I started working with adolescents. I was barely out of adolescence myself at the time, and round robin circle, I am back currently working with young people, adolescents, again. But throughout the years, I've worked with adults, children, families. So I'll talk briefly about Queen of Peace Center and what we do, and then kind of expand beyond that. So Queen of Peace offers treatment for women, families, children, teenagers suffering from substance use disorder and co-occurring issues. So as Brandon mentioned, oftentimes, people that present with substance use issues, whether they're considered addicted or simply experimenting with various substances, they often have other issues in addition to that. And it could be something as mild as performance anxiety, speaking in front of a group, or something as serious as schizoaffective disorder, and then everything in between. You know, depression, anxiety seems really common. And so we look at this as a health issue and also a medical issue that requires medical treatment. So, for instance, Queen of Peace Center, we focus very largely on women and children, specifically pregnant women. It's one of our priority populations. If a pregnant woman comes to treatment with a heroin or opiate addiction, it's really imperative that she receive medical assisted treatment, that she receives some medication throughout her pregnancy. It's critical for her health, as well as the health of the baby, that she not try and go cold turkey. And this is something a lot of people don't know, including, surprisingly, and some of our medical professionals. So, so that's one thing that we really pride ourselves as a treatment facility in trying to take care of the mom and the baby and have a healthy pregnancy, and then sustain that recovery beyond the pregnancy. So, but in terms of opiate addiction, heroin addiction, addiction to pain meds for the general population, young and old, whether a person is 16 or 76 years old, I'm a firm believer that medication-assisted treatment is really critical. And this is, I've come round robin throughout the years. Years ago, pretty much all we had to offer people who are addicted to opiates was methadone. And I remember decades ago, thinking, "Wow, you know, that's, that's rough, you know, that a person would have to go to a methadone clinic every single day to get their dose, to get their medicine, to stay off of their drug of choice and to stay healthy and well." So now, as decades have gone by and medical advances have continued, we have a lot of other options. We have naltrexone. We have vivitrol. There's even something in the paper this weekend I was alerted to that's an implant that allows the naltrexone to systematically release into the person's body over, I believe it's eight weeks or something like that. And so that addresses some of the critical challenges with medication-assisted therapy. Oftentimes, a person may start out highly motivated for treatment and then maybe have a rough time and lose motivation and decide, "I'm not taking this medicine. I don't like it. I don't like the side effects." And then some crisis comes up, and then they relapse. They use again. So with some of these longer-acting, new forms of dosing through the And so that addresses some of the critical challenges with medication-assisted therapy. Oftentimes, a person may start out highly motivated for treatment and then maybe have a rough time and lose motivation and decide, I'm not taking this medicine. I don't like it. I don't like the side effects. And then some crisis comes up, and then they relapse, they use again. So with some of these longer-acting, new forms of dosing through the, either through vivitrol a shot or through naltrexone implants, a person is able to have the dose more continuously. And so that option of changing their mind when maybe they're having a moment of ambivalence or a moment of, I don't want to take this, you know, just a weak moment in their recovery. So I think that's really exciting, and, and the advancement of, you know, medication that helps a person to stay healthy, helps them stay clean and sober. I think that's a good thing. Let's see. So treatment options vary, and for, because of a lot of medical and healthcare issues throughout the years, the option for inpatient, hospital-based, medical-based treatment is much less so currently than it has been in the past. And so what we have, we do still have some facilities, some options for hospital-based inpatient treatment, which is great. And I always advocate people, if you have a loved one, if you yourself are suffering from addiction, and it's a physiological, powerful, psychological addiction such as heroin or some other, something else that really has a grasp on, on a person, I would encourage you to advocate, speak loud and hard, and be assertive, and be the squeaky wheel, and try and get that person, or try and get yourself, inpatient somewhere. Because I think, you know, that safety net, medical 24-hour supervision, I think, you know, that can be optimal for a lot of people, at least the start. Beyond that, we have intensive outpatient treatment, sometimes known as IOP, and just outpatient treatment. So, for instance, at our treatment center, Queen of Peace Center, a person might start out in, in, inpatient setting for two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, depending on the individual. If a woman is pregnant, we have other supported housing centers where she can transition to for safety and support, continued care. We also have the ability through Queen of Peace Center for women to bring their children into treatment with them, which in the past, that's always been a real barrier. It's one of the unique features about our center and our programs. We have several housing components that help a woman with that, that part of her treatment. In addition, it, I firmly believe and, and know this to be true, that this is a family issue. It's a family matter. If you are comfortable with the word disease, it's a family disease. It affects everybody and their brother, mother, sister, daughter, cousin, auntie, neighbor, you know, everybody. And I would imagine it's rare that somebody would be sitting in this room and not have somebody they know that you've probably been impacted greatly by someone with an addiction, if not yourself. So we really encourage that family model. And there's actually evidence that proves that when a family is involved in the treatment, whether it's individualized counseling for that family member, or family therapy, or counseling for the children individually, we do a lot of art therapy, play therapy, you know, creative modalities. When the family members are involved, it actually, there's direct evidence and data that proves that the woman, the individual, has a longer sustained recovery process. And so it's, it's a win-win for everybody. The family gets better, the individual, the identified patient gets better, and, and, you know, it, it helps the family in a holistic way. Chronicity is an issue that comes up related to how long a person has been using, how much they've been using, how intense their, how much they use, how long, the number of times they've been in and out of rehab. For many reasons, opiate addiction isn't usually just a straight, one-time shot, I went to rehab, I'm done, I'm good, I'm over it. Oftentimes, it's, it's like a lot of other serious illnesses. It's like cancer, you know? A person stays free of cancer for a while, and then maybe there's some evidence of something coming back. So it's like diabetes, it's like heart issues, you know? Sometimes a person has a good stretch of staying healthy, and then boom, they have a stroke. So addiction is like that too, specifically, especially opiate addiction. And so if you know someone who has tried rehab, and then they go back out and use again, I'm just here to say, don't give up on them, and, and try not to, try not to judge them based on that, because it is an illness, and that's sometimes part of the illness. So we really look at addiction as, like I said, a medical issue, mental health disorder, and something that is treatable, and something that, the treatment modality, the treatment components, I like to say, are multifaceted. At best, they're also multi-layered. It's not just medication. It's medication and counseling and self-help groups, and maybe yoga, or maybe some other physical enriching option that a person really immerses themselves into. I often tell my clients, you know, spend as much time, energy, effort in your recovery program as you spent trying to get your drug, use your drug, and keep your drug use hidden from all the people that you knew. You know, spend as much time and energy in that way proactively to keep yourself alive, basically. So with that being said, another issue that I wanted to speak briefly about is the, the "not ready" line. I often hear family members and friends of people say to me, well, you know, we tried to do that, we tried and tried to get our loved one into rehab, but they just weren't ready. They weren't ready. And at this point in my life, that just, that really rubs me the wrong way. And I think to myself, you know, in my own personal life, I used a lot of things, and I got clean and sober a long time ago, but I still kept smoking cigarettes because I loved my cigarettes. And it's like, gosh darn it, I am not giving this up. And I always said, I'm not ready, I'm not ready, I'm not ready. And finally, I realized, if I would have waited till I was ready, I probably would have, it probably would have been when I had emphysema or lung cancer or something like that. So, so I think, even if a person is not ready, I think there are ways to help them get ready. And some of those things we use through our programs, and I know a lot of other programs use them, motivational enhancement therapy. We really take a lot of information from the client or the patient, the person who's suffering from addiction, and we try and hone in on what, what is it that motivates you? What is it that you like to do? What is it that you used to like to do that you're not doing anymore? What is it that you might look forward to doing? How is it that, you know? So we try and really find out what motivates them and work from that starting point. And it's very effective. It's one of our best evidence-based tools, and, and that's what keeps me going with this program. So the "not ready" line, I always say to them, let me have a try. And, and I would say that, you know, to your loved one or to yourself, you know? Go try, try it out. Go get yourself a screening and assessment, go to your nearest, you know, treatment provider, counselor, rehab, hospital, if it's a crisis situation, and, and see if you're not ready. You know, just see. So maybe you try it, you don't like it, you're not ready, maybe along the way, maybe by the second or third counseling session, you find that you actually are ready. So I just, you know, I encourage people, don't give up just because you think a person is not ready. There are ways, there are ways to help a person get ready. What else? Last but not least, I think access to care is challenging. Sometimes it feels difficult. A person may be ready on a Friday to go into rehab, but then there are no beds available, or there's no appointment available, or they don't call you back until the next week, two weeks later. And I just really encourage you to keep knocking, be the squeaky wheel, keep calling, don't give up, you know? Call, call, call away. Show up at the hospital emergency room, if that's what you have to do. If you feel like your loved one is risking their life because they're using so much, then take them, take them to the hospital, you know? Call BHR. That's a great resource for crisis situations, behavioral health response. And we have cards and information out in the lobby as well. So I, you know, I always feel like this is a life and death matter, and I just take it very seriously. If I feel like somebody is perhaps passively suicidal because they're using heroin so much, and they know it could kill them, well then, I might just say, hey, let's get in the car and go see what they have to say about this, you know? And, and that might get them a bed, that might get them inpatient for a day or two. And that might just be the thing to save their life. So I thank you for listening, and I'll be around for questions if anyone has anything after the program. And I'm introducing Juan Wilson, who is with the DEA.
Welcome to the least professional portion of the program tonight. You know, seeing the people here today was very, it's kind of reminiscent of, I actually work for the St. Charles City Police Department, and I'm detached from the St. Charles City Police Department to the Drug Enforcement Administration in St. Louis. Really, all that means is I have a lot of paperwork and a lot of bosses to answer to. But with that being said, I do a lot of work out in St. Charles County. We held a town hall, one of our first ones, in St. Peters, and we had probably 20 to 25 people show up. And the 20 to 25 people that showed up were the people that were supporting us in the group. It wasn't people from the community that needed to be there. So I want to thank you guys all for, for being here and taking time out of your, your evening. Off of that, I want to recognize a couple of people, the Fitz Walters. Can you guys stand up for me real quick? Can everybody give them a hand, please?
My, my position is kind of unique. You know, I started as a jailer at St. Charles City in 2006. And I knew that I was going to be a police officer, I just didn't know what I was going to do once I got into it. So 2006 is when it started. I did that for about two and a half years. During the last year of being in the, working in the jail, I went through the police academy. I got to experience a lot of different things, working in the jail, but I was ready to hit the road. Once I got on the road, I was a police officer for a year. That's it. Then I went undercover. So I did undercover work for two and a half years, and that's when I really started to experience the heroin epidemic. Not only that, I got to experience it personally. I was married at the time, and our son, who was four, was diagnosed with brain cancer. And so we were going through all of that, and the very first day of his radiation, I remember vividly, it was 6:00 in the morning, and we were going to make the trip down to the Excitement Cancer Center. And I'm taking stuff out to the car, coming back in, out to the car, coming back in, and my wife at the time was just standing, just motionless in the living room. And I'm not really thinking anything of it, because I'm doing my stuff, I'm getting stuff out of the car, we gotta go. When I finally took a moment to pause, I looked at her, go, what's wrong? And that's when she said that they just found her dad dead in his apartment from an overdose. That was my introduction to it. I started doing undercover work, and I tell you, the first time that I ever, I was very, very sheltered as a kid. I've never smoked marijuana in my entire life. The first time that I actually saw heroin was when I bought it when I was undercover. And it's like, how do you do that? You know, the drug dealer hands you the heroin, what do you say? Like, yeah, man, that's the stuff I was looking for. You know, you don't really know. That was my intro to it. Then as I started doing it more and more and more, buying the heroin, we started experiencing people dying. And me personally, just in the county that I was in, it didn't seem like anybody was really doing anything about it, because quite honestly, we had a stigma about it. You know, no one was associating substance use disorder as a brain disease. They were saying, it's a junkie that is making a choice every single time. And we had to recognize it as an actual disease, as a disorder. So as I started doing the investigations, we started to try to prosecute them. I would send a case down to the prosecutor's office, it'd get sent back, and they'd say no. I'd send another one down, they'd say no. Send another one down, they kept telling me no. But one of the things we have to do, and that I've learned in this fight, is to never give up. Brandon talked about it before, hope. You know, with my son, you know, he's 11 now. He's a hot mess, but he's my hot mess. Cancer did a lot of things to him, the treatments did a lot more to him. But he is a spinning image of hope. I can't lose hope because of him. So I'm not going to lose hope fighting heroin. So I kept pushing, and I kept pushing, and I kept pushing, until finally somebody listened. We had a change in prosecuting attorneys in St. Charles County, and then we also had a very tenacious redhead in the federal prosecutor's office, and we started prosecuting people for these overdoses. And so far, right now, we have convicted three in federal court. We've got three more going in the state, and I've got three more going in federal court. You know, we, we have the stigma of heroin to where no one wants to talk about it. So aside from doing the prosecutions and the investigations for overdose deaths, one of my favorite parts is going into the schools and talking to the kids. Because we started a program with DEA, it's called the DEA 360 Strategy. You can Google it, they had it on the news for a couple of things. And, you know, law enforcement has been law enforcement, okay? We arrest people, we take people to jail, we create an impact in the community by enforcement. And one of the things that we recognized was, we're not going to jail our way out of heroin. Okay? Because if I have somebody that is suffering from substance use disorder, I take them to jail, and they sit in jail for 24 hours, and I offer them no resources or try to intervene anywhere in there, after 24 hours, what are they? Somebody that's still suffering from substance use disorder. So one of the things that we wanted to do was, we, we create that time and space in between when they were picked up to the time that they're released. It's not a catch-all, it's not a fix-all. Because no matter how much I talk to somebody, I've been doing it since 2010, I've learned a whole lot. No matter how much you talk to somebody, it's up to them. So one of the things that we wanted to do was, when we create that time and space in between their next use, is try to offer some resources. When we go into the community, we do a search warrant, and we hit a house, and we're arresting people out of the house, and kids are possibly going with DFS. What are we going to do for those families in the meantime? Because before, it was hit the house, take people to jail, and we're done. Now we're actually getting involved with the families. I pointed out the Fitz Walter family because I didn't know them until a couple of months ago. They actually saw the DEA 360 Strategy get announced on the news, and they immediately emailed us and said, hey, what can we do to get involved? So what do we do? They live in Ferguson. At like 8:00 at night, we went and bothered them, hung out at their house for a couple hours, just talked. After we're done here, I want you guys to get, get to know them and get comfortable with them, because I had heard there's a group called Walking for Want to Stop Heroin. Has anybody seen the group? We all wear the bright-colored shirts. We do walks mostly on Tuesday nights, and then sometimes we do memorial ones. We just had one at Francis Howell, then we had one in Warrenton. A lot of people were asking me, why aren't you guys doing anything in North County? Why aren't you guys doing anything in the city? Why aren't you guys out here? I'm very, very proud of them, because they're going to be your contacts for North County Walking for Want to Stop Heroin. They have taken it upon themselves, because they lost their son. They lost their son to an overdose. So that's where their passion comes from. This all becomes one big family. You know? When you get involved with this, and it becomes a community issue, it becomes an issue for everyone. I've got two kids myself. I've got a 15-and-a-half-year-old, and I've got an 11-year-old. I promised them that one day, somebody's going to try to offer them heroin. Somebody's going to try to offer them prescription pills. It's going to happen. When I was in high school, prescription pills were offered to me. And I graduated in 99. We're talking about 2016, where you can watch commercials and you can see, what do the pills look like now? They look like candy. They all look like Flintstone vitamin chewables. They market them so much, to where they market medications to fix the side effects. To those, and not only do that, they air them during the Super Bowl. That's the state that we're living in. What are we here for? My son, he's 11, he's at home, and I said, hey, man, you want to go with me? I didn't tell him where I was going. He's like, yeah. Where are we going? I'm like, man, just put your shoes on. So, he starts to put his shoes on, I'm like, where are we going? I go, a presentation? He's like, oh, okay. So, he just takes his shoes off. I'm like, why aren't you going to go with me? He's like, because you always have presentations, you're just always talking about it. He knows. Am I guaranteed that he's not going to try it when he gets older? No. Because then again, that's the stigma of heroin or substance use disorder. They will tell you that it's somebody, a bad person, a criminal, somebody who makes a choice and continues to make the choice. It's not. It's doctors, it's lawyers, it's people that go to our churches. It's our police officers. We actually had a task force officer with DEA, who got hooked on heroin during his investigations. We've had DEA agents lose their kids. You know, it's very hard to put it into a nice package, to where it hits home with everyone. It hits home for us that have been affected by it, who have seen it. Right now, I'm working 37 overdose cases at the same time. Thirty-seven. And only two of them are over the age of 30. We're talking about kids. We're talking about kids whose parents, I've had to pry them off of their children while they were trying to save their lives. What do we do? We talk. A lot of times, people say, talk is cheap, not in this instance. We have to talk about it. We have to spread awareness. We have to police our own communities, because the police, we can be there. You guys are going to see it more than we will, because you're in the community. You're seeing your neighbor across the street, the foot traffic coming in and out. You're going to the gas station every morning to get your cup of coffee, and you're seeing the corner of that gas station where a lot of people are going in and out of. You're going to see it. Be vigilant. Talk about it and spread awareness. Aside from all of the other stuff, one of the hope that I get out of this is actually seeing people in recovery. Because I don't get to see that at all. I handle the overdose cases, I see the scenes, I see the pictures. For me, I like to know that I'm fighting for something. So, seeing people in recovery, that's what gives me hope. So, we actually have somebody here in recovery, and we've got Brandon Roberts.
Everybody there, can you hear me without it? Yeah? Sure. How many of you guys have kids here? Yeah, wow. Okay. I'm not really one to sugarcoat things, and so, I'm not going to this evening. It is nice to see the rich people in this room, but I'm shocked that this whole room is not filled up. Because this area is completely saturated with heroin. And you can ask me how I know that, and I'll tell you, I spent every single day down here. My role here is to kind of share my story with you guys, and so, that's what I tend to do. I don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to run through pretty quickly. My story starts like Brandon said. I had a friend who committed suicide at age 14. This was a best friend, this was the kid that, he was either at my house or at his house. And we didn't do anything apart, we were together all the time, and we played soccer together. Anyway, he shot himself in the head on the side of his parents' house. And I was 14 years old, so imagine having your best friend at 14 do that, that was pretty, that was pretty traumatizing. And looking back on it, I guess at the time, I didn't really know how to respond to that. And I guess I responded the best way that I thought I could. And that was just to bury it and kind of act like it didn't happen. First funeral I have been to, I've only been to about three, and the very first one was his. That was pretty intense. Shortly after that, I started, I developed migraine headaches. And these weren't just regular migraine headaches, I mean, these were migraine headaches that landed me in the emergency room almost every single time I got them. So, they were debilitating, I was homeschooled for a while. And the doctor put me on all kinds of medications, I mean, everything from antidepressants to you name it, I was on it, until we got to the point where it was just so expensive for me to go to the ER all the time, and none of these medications were working. So, as I remember it, at that age, he wrote me a prescription for migraine, or something like that, and just like, sent me on my way, like, here, this should help. And at the time, it seemed so crazy, you know? Because at the time, I was suffering from migraine, so I needed some relief from that. Looking back on it, it is absolutely crazy. I mean, he gave me, it was a prescription that was refillable three different times, and there was 30 or 40 pills in the bottle, and it was a free from, you know? And so, that's what kind of started this whole process. Give you a little background on who I was as a student. I was a model student. I had taught attendance all four years, pretty much 4.0 varsity soccer all four years. So, I was a likable guy. And nobody really knew, none the wiser really. But I soon found out, in the younger parts of high school, that I didn't just have to have a migraine headache, to take these pills and like, feel good about it. You know, like most students, teenagers, they start out with something, whether it's cigarettes or something like that, and you've all heard that this is a progression. And I used to hate to hear that, when I was in rehab and all of that. But it is absolutely aggression. And I started with prescription medication, taking them like I was supposed to. And all through the years, I started taking more and more, and more and more, and more and more. Shortly after I graduated, I was introduced to a gentleman who was suffering from stage IV cancer, or cancer in stage IV. So, he was on his way out, and this gentleman, he didn't have anything to his name. He could barely take for groceries. In fact, he was selling half of this prescription of what I would consider the strongest pain medication on the planet. He was selling half of it so that he could buy those things. And I was making good money at the time, young, takes your height in. And so, I was buying half of it. And this was like $400 a week I was spending on this. Even still, at that time, it didn't, I didn't have an addiction, there wasn't even anything I thought about. We certainly didn't have these to go to, or assemblies that we speak of, didn't have any of that. One of the days, I was going over there to buy this from him, I had a friend that was in the passenger seat of my car, and he pulled out this little, looked to me like a little pill, and asked me if I wanted to try this. And I go, well, what is that? And he told me it was heroin. And I remember very vividly, to this day, like it was yesterday, how mad I got in that moment. Because in my mind, there was a line that I was unwilling to cross. There was this line where I was at over here, and that was, I can do like, pretty much everything, but a true junkie is somebody that does heroin. And I would never ever touch heroin. So, I was pretty livid in that moment. And I told him to put it away, to never show me that again, and bring it up to me again. Three weeks later, I tried heroin for the first time, and I had stopped for 10 years. I don't say that looking for any kind of praise or anything like that, just quite honestly, I'm embarrassed, and a shame of it. I had to go through a lot of stuff in those 10 years. And I guess every day is not necessarily the truth, because the reality of that is, you don't have enough money to fuel that addiction every single day. Because what's going to happen is, you're going to use all of your own money, you're going to max out all of your own credit cards, and you're going to pawn everything that you own. And that's only going to get you so far. And then, all the people that you love and care about in your life, you're going to steal all their money, and then you're going to max out all their credit cards, and you're going to pawn every single thing that's worth any kind of value to them. And that's exactly what I did. Anybody who knows me personally knows that my relationships in my life mean more to me than anything. And I was willing to sacrifice those to get high, and to get what I wanted. So, there were days when that ran out, when all my mom's guns of jewelry and tools ran out to steal. I wouldn't get high those days, when they took me to the slammer. I spent, not, three months in there, 90 days. Never been in trouble, never even a speeding ticket. And I was 23, they took me to jail, and I spent 90 days in a kind of jail. That's a terrible place to be. It was overpopulated, I was sitting on a concrete floor in this jail. And that wasn't like me just hanging out in jail, that was me then going with golf. And if anybody goes with golf, it's like, everybody's got the flu in here, so it's the cold sweats, right? It's the vomiting, diarrhea, all that great fun stuff. But it's not just that, it's that time, it's about country. And that lasted for about three weeks. And all you can think about in those three weeks is basically just killing yourself, because it is so painful and so miserable, the easy route would just be to end your life. Well, it's hard to do in jail. You know, it's not the easiest thing to do in jail. And then, if you're at home, you know, your family's around you. I remember the times that I went to this, in jail was a miserable place, because everything is out in the open, and everybody's looking at you, and so, you can't, there's no privacy, it's not like I can go to the bathroom and nobody see me puking and having diarrhea all over myself. That's not it, because everybody sees what's going on in there. And the only relief you really get from it is to stand in the shower for a while, but you're so incredibly weak that you can only do that for a few minutes before you just have to go back to your bed, with towels all around you because you're sweating, freezing cold. You just lay in there a while for three weeks. It's absolutely miserable. And that's just the physical part of that, that doesn't even touch on the emotional part. And that's pretty good to think about, all of the people that you've spoken from, and all of the relationships that you've sacrificed to be the selfish person, to get high every single day. It's miserable. And then, when you finally get clean, you're left to deal with that for the rest of your time. I've done a lot of great things since that time, and I give my time back as much as I can, but nothing will ever take away the pain that I see in my mom's eyes. Every time she looks in my face, she's happy that I'm doing good, but I know I destroyed her as a mother. Hardest thing for me to do is to admit to her that I was doing heroin. This is absolutely irreversible. I don't know if it's a disease, I don't know if it's not a disease, I don't know if it's this, I don't know if it's that. But there is one thing that I know, one thing that has changed me as a person, and has changed the course of my life, and that was a decision I made years ago, to focus on what I wanted my life to look like, and what was important to me in my life, and what fulfilled me as a person. So often, I talk to these high school kids, and there's no real direction, and they just kind of are floating through life. And you may say, well, they're young, they don't know you. Well, that's true, but if there isn't people speaking into their lives and telling them, you need to be focusing on what's important to you, and you need to go after that at all costs. I promise you, if they don't, there's a real good chance that they're going to end up just like me. And so, I made the decision to do that, and do what fulfills me as a person, and that's helping other people. And so, me standing up here, sharing my story with you, is exactly me doing what fulfills me as a human being. So, that in itself, right there, that little nugget, is what keeps me clean on a daily basis. If I lose sight of that, without a doubt, I will start getting high, without a doubt. I'm no way this, under any kind of false impression, that I can just kind of hang out and not get high anymore, because I promise you that that's what I will do. But for me, in my head, it's not about curing something, or it's not about having a disease or not having a disease. It's just about living a lifestyle that is conducive to a lifestyle that I really want. It allows me and provides me the opportunity to fill myself up, you know, every single day. So, it's more about that for me than it is anything else. Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. It means a lot to me, even though there's not as many people as I want there to be. But this area, this area, needs to be extremely proactive. And I say that wholeheartedly, and I am dead serious, this area is scary. This is a scary, scary area. And I was down here in the daytime, and I was scared. Thank you.
Deal with me one last time for just a second, for those of you that care, Blues are up 2-0, so enjoy that, but we appreciate you being here tonight. Going to be very, very brief. You've heard a lot tonight about stories of loss, what we're dealing with, and stories of recovery. And it's very, very easy to be overwhelmed, you know, the prejudice that communities have against just the word heroin. It makes people cringe. But we have to remember, as Juan said, as Brandon said, as Dana said, there is hope out there. But we have to get up and we have to create our own hope. We have to make our communities a better place. Law enforcement does a great job with what they can do, but law enforcement can't change cultures. Law enforcement can't change, or can't make people clean out their medicine cabinets. Law enforcement can't make parents sit down and talk to their kids about how dangerous prescription drugs are. We can do that. We can do that as a community. We can come together, we can help reverse this trend that's been going up and up and up since 2007. As Brandon said, this area is very, very hard hit. But so is South County, down around 270 and 55, Oakville Melville area, very different demographic down there. Where else is hard hit? Chesterfield, Eureka, Kirkwood, very, very different demographic. What does that tell us? It tells us that substance use disorders don't care how old you are, they don't care what your gender is, they don't care what color your skin is, and they don't care what, how much money is in your bank account. We've heard stories about people in, you know, barely getting by, or homeless folks, and people in $500,000 homes that are suffering with this exact same disease. But there's hope. We have to get out there and make it. Most of the people that spoke tonight will be happy to speak with folks out in the lobby, but I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I want to thank the city and police department, once again, for hosting this, and we'll be happy to talk to you out there. Thank you all very much, have a good night. Thank you all very much, have a good night.